Welcome, everyone, to the Plan and Zone Commission meeting for the city of Bettendorf for January 15th. Can we have a roll call, please?
Gibson?
Here.
Kapler?
Here.
Armsby? Satterfield? Stoltenberg?
Here.
Wenland?
Here.
Great. Can I get the approval of the minutes for the last meeting? Need a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the minutes from December 18th, 2024.
All right, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, post and sign, we're good. All right. This is the Plan and Zone Commission. We are a seven-member commission appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. The commission is a recommended body only, with the city council making all final decisions. We hold the regular meetings here, Wednesday every, well, third Wednesday of every month at 5:30. Next time, I think we should have it in Florida, but this is my opinion. We follow items that are presented for rezoning requests, preliminary plaits, final plaits, site development, landscape plans, and plan unit development plans. All right, next on our agenda is a review and approval of 2024 Plan and Zone Commission Annual Report.
I can speak briefly on this. We sent out just a findings and results from last year. I think we had the findings, a general summary to be that we had less development cases, I think. Slowed down a little bit. We had a little mini development cases the year prior, so I think that was a pretty typical cycle for building permits catching up, and then we'll continue on. But we can take any questions or Mark give anything to add.
All right, sounds good. Okay. Any motion on that?
We do have to.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the 2024 Planning and Zone Commission Annual Report.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Just a brief discussion. Good job from everyone. A lot of hard work put into it. We appreciate that. All right, those all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Number four on our agenda, election of officers. Think we could skip that till we have a couple more members. Does that work for everyone?
I was gonna make the same suggestion until we have a full commission here.
All right, sounds good.
So is there a motion to postpone?
You want to?
Yeah, let's do a motion to postpone until the next meeting.
I would move that we postpone number four on tonight's agenda to a meeting where we have a full dais of commission members.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. With that, I think we're on to you, Taylor.
All right, thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we have two development cases on the agenda at the same location. Case 25002, replat, a final plat replat, Glen Grove Edition, and then the related site development plan for each of those lots. I'll move into the presentation. So a bit of background on this case. The applicant is Steve Giefman. This is located the southwest corner of Forest Grove Drive and Devil's Glen Road. The final plat and site plan just consist of an area north and east of Rainforest Drive, so that's shown on the map. This is the former site of those private ball fields, as our commission probably remembers. This was, there was a future land use map amendment and rezonings associated with this, and then we have a new comp plan and future land use maps, so much, a lot of action is on this corner. The final plat proposes four interior lots, all commercial lots, and then the site plan proposes a building for each of those lots, an associated parking, a trail, sidewalks, and enhanced landscaping are also included. The future land use map designates this area as service commercial. It's our median commercial area. Surrounding use, future land use designations are neighborhood light and mixed transitional on the corner of Forest Grove Drive and Devil's Glen Road. The current zoning is C2, community commercial. Eusters restrictions have been recorded on the property, I'll note, and are referenced in the final plat notes. The future land use designation and current zoning, proposed uses and densities, or intensities are all compliant and compatible. Taking a look at the final plat of Glen Grove. Here are your four lots, so three have frontages on, three are to the north and a larger lot to the south. Each lot has either direct access or access via easements to curb cuts onto Rainforest Drive. No direct access is going to be allowed to Forest Grove Drive or Devil's Glen Road. So they'll all be, there's two curb cuts, actually, all on Rainforest Drive, and then secondary accesses to the main thoroughfares of Forest Grove and Devil's Glen. Cross parking easements for all lots are described in the plat notes, so they can, this whole development will have short parking. This is a very smart choice. And this replat meets all zoning bulk standards, so we're set back in all subdivision requirements as well. I guess if we can, I'll jump right into the site development plan, but I can take any questions on the plat, combining the cases in one presentation.
I'll just keep going.
Okay. Moving to the site development plan. So this is, here's a running of the overall site. You can see the four lots and those four buildings as described earlier on each lot. The, there's already, there's sufficient utility connections that either exist or they're moving into the site. Stormwater will be off-site as a, from the first edition, Highland Grove First Edition, so it's the south, and it'll, it's sufficient for this whole development. Recreation amenities include the existing 10-foot trail, a bike pad trail on Forest Grove Drive. The developer is also proposing a trail that will bisect right east-west through the middle of the development and provide pedestrian, bike pedestrian access to the developments and a shared use, kind of a picnic area in the center. And then also additional sidewalk and trail connections are shown throughout on either Rainforest Drive. Our new sidewalk on Devil's Glen Road, we just had a widening project there, and then also painted connections to each building on the actual parking escape. Taking a closer look at the northern three buildings. Lot one, which is your northeast corner, is contained a drive-through restaurant. Vehicle stacking and off-street parking provided exceed code, so we have, we only require six. There's many more than that winding around this building. They have off-street parking spaces and waiting spaces for some of that drive-through customers. So these are people that make an order, pull out of the stacking, and then wait for an order. I think we see a similar at like a Culvers or something like that. Lot two is your center building. This is a mixed-use building, so it'll have multiple tenants, retail, bar, and a restaurant. There are drive-through aisles as well to accommodate a future tenant on the west side, so you have stacking on all the north side and then moving down to the south. Want to point that out. And lot four, which is the northwest corner, that contains also a drive-through restaurant. Vehicle stacking is similar to the east, the northeast building. It's exceeds our requirements, and the off-street parking provided also exceed requirements just on-site. Moving south, we have the largest building on lot three. This is a two-story mixed-use building. Uses proposed our restaurant and office, office suites. Off-street parking also exceeds requirements, and I want to remind everyone, all the, this is all shared parking, so the entire site has sufficient parking. There's 292 spaces, actually, 52 more than we are required by our current off-street parking code. So our staff is very content with, confident with the parking plan here. I will note, there's three enclosed dumpsters on the site. Both, these will be shared by all the tenants. Two are located centrally in the center of the development, here and here. Can mark those on the map. And then the third one is south of the larger building, just to south of the building. Go through, clear that. Some renderings of the proposed development. The developer shared some 3D, and their architect some 3D rendering, so this is a rendering of the two-story building on lot three. Just kind of go through. I will note, any outdoor, so if there's restaurants or bars, well, bars require a specially used permit, and then any restaurants with outdoor service and alcohol, that has a specially used process to just kind of review any external factors such as noise or lighting and hours, et cetera. So that would be a process once we get more details on the actual tenants. But again, here's the two-story building, and you can see some of the picnic area in the center, that's the, in that shared paved area. Overall site, looking towards the south, the two drive-throughs, the mixed-use, one-story and the mixed-use two-story. Kind of continue on. Taking a look at the landscape plan. Due to the high amount of street frontage the development contains, we have Forest Grove Drive, Devil's Glen Road, and really Rainforest Drive is two sides. The tree factors required based off our formula for landscaping is 43, quite high. The landscape plan does meet the requirements. No plantings, not added note, no plantings are allowed or shown in the 75-foot pipeline easement, or buildings for that matter. So that's on the west side right here. So most plantings are concentrated on the southern streetscape, so we'll have future residential, some future residential townhomes facing that. And then on the eastern streetscape, which is Devil's Glen, that currently will add additional screening to the Devil's Glen corridor. There's more residential to the east in Copper Ridge, which has, at present, has a berm, landscape berm, so landscape berm, a larger street, and then screen from these trees, so it's quite a bit of buffering and landscaping there. And then in addition to the trees, native grasses and plantings are included throughout, so in all these green areas. The applicant did submit, and located on the site plan, our sign locations. Here's a rendering of those signs. They are identical. These are just monument signs located on the corners of the development. This meets our code, and staff can comment that blends in with the character of the proposed development. Moving on to our staff recommendation. Staff contends the proposed final plat and site plan meet some standards and code requirements. Staff recommends approval of case number 25002 and case number 25003, a final plat for Glen Grove Edition and site plan for the Glen Grove Development. Take any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Anne.
The first question, Taylor, can you show us where the patios are located?
So we have some, I have some additional information that was included in the packet online that probably gives a little better. I believe there's a, some second-floor patios and a first-floor patio on the, on the two-story mixed-use building. As of right now, I do not know of any patios on the one-story mixed-use building, but oftentimes they, there could be some added on the, on these, on these doorways, basically, small patios. What was the question regarding those patios?
Well, I guess my follow-up question to that was, is there a potential for outdoor music at any of these locations?
Those, we do have our, all of our ordinances for noise and hours, but any outdoor, and Mark can fill in some details here, but any outdoor venue, well, not venue, any outdoor alcohol service period would require a specially used, that's a whole public hearing through our Board of Adjustment. We just don't have those details per each tenant. There's a lot of different tenants here, some known, some unknown, so those, I don't think we can quite answer. We'll need to answer those questions when we get that information.
Yeah, that's, so that would be part of the application to the Board of Adjustment for a special use permit, would be when they ask for the alcohol service on the patio, they'll ask them the nature of the use, and then we'll look at the externalities, you know, light, noise, those type of things. That's all on the checklist required by code for their review. We've had those cases come through where they've not been allowed to have outdoor music. We've had them come through where they're allowed to in certain hours. So it just really matters on what's proposed, what the use is proposed, and how the Board of Adjustment rules on that use.
Okay, that's good, and there's a process in place for that.
Yes.
Yep, and our notes.
Taylor, you mentioned?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
You're gonna go.
Okay, there's a little bit of a delay, so. You mentioned the picnic area, but that picnic area is slant by the dumpsters, which, to me, doesn't seem like a very good location for a picnic area. Perhaps it might be a better location for bike racks or something like that, but if the dumpsters are going to be right in the middle of that complex, it just, to me, doesn't appear to be a good location for a picnic area.
Or, you know, or you move the dumpsters, I guess. That would be up, that's a, that's a site deal till that's totally up to the developer. It's not in code. They need to have dumpster areas, they need to be screened, so our review says they meet code. If Mr. Giefman wants to relocate those somewhere else on-site, we could, that's a pretty modest change, we could accommodate that as long as they're screened and can be picked up appropriately. Of course, they have to be accessible for the trucks, and that's, that's the big thing when they locate dumpsters, is the trucks have to be able to get to them, and they want as little backing as possible. Bad things happen when garbage trucks pack up.
So that'll just be my suggestion.
Sure.
Okay.
Consider that a minor change, yeah.
Taylor, on the, on the site plan map, if you can pull that up. The building, I'm, hold on, let me pull up my packet and get a little bit bigger where I can read it. The building that's close in the northwest corner has a drive-through, and that's very close to Ingress and Egress, and to me, seems like a very logical, smooth traffic flow. But I'm more interested in the building on lot number one, and that has a drive-through, a staging parking spot for people to wait for their orders. That's good, too, but getting to that, that building, navigating through all of the parking islands and everything, doesn't look like a smooth traffic flow to me. Any discussion about that as the project has evolved?
I think there's a, it does meet, and our city engineer comment on the, as far as turn rate DI and everything, but I believe it does meet all of our turn radius requirements. As far as stacking, I mentioned, there's more than, exceeds our stacking requirements, and they have these parking, so ideally, they won't have people, maybe even during the busiest times, stacking very far back. As far as the smooth getting there in a straight-line fashion, I believe there's a balance of if you have too much of that, the speeds exceed design, as far as they, people treat them like roads rather than a drive aisle in a parking lot. So I guess there's a balance between having it too easy to get to one location or slowing down to make some of those turns, but I kind of, our city engineer comment, comment on that.
Yeah, Anne Taylor hit most of it right on the head. That southern entrance, the other thing you have to keep in mind, if that was to try to align with the drive aisle completely, it would be too close to the intersection, so we've got minimum distances that have to be offset between the intersections to make sure you can keep traffic moving in and on the public streets. That's our most important component, is to keep traffic on the public streets moving. Within the private development, having a little jog there is definitely not a bad thing, makes people slow down, as Taylor said, and as long as we can get emergency vehicles through there, it'll meet all the requirements.
Hey, Anne, it's Mark, just a couple things that we did talk about similarly when we did our staff review, trying to balance that, you know, ease of access versus traffic calming. The one thing we did like is how the drive-throughs were situated to the north, so that if you did have a really busy, popular restaurant, that when they stack up and they, and they, even if they exceed their, their built-in requirement, which is six, but they're probably more like 12 or 15, but even if they exceed that, they're gonna exceed it onto their own property because of where they're situating those two buildings to the north. So we liked that from a layout and design perspective. We like it when if you exceed, you exceed on your own property, not into, not into the right-of-way like you might see at other places around town without naming names, so.
Okay, thank you. I, you know, I live close to the corner of Devil's Glen and Middle Road, and that's a very popular whitey there, that sometimes backs up out on, into Middle Road. And I understand what you're saying, this isn't gonna back up into a public screen, but the stacking there may not be adequate if, if it is a business that is that busy. So that, that was my concern, and it sounds like you're, you've addressed it, so, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the commission?
It's Roy. I had a similar, sorry, a similar perspective on the picnic area, I guess it was called. The proximity of the dumpster, it's a little concerning. Ultimately, it's up to the developer, since he meets the criteria. The one thing I would maybe consider doing is keeping the dumpsters on the ends for the access for the trucks, as you noted, and then move the picnic area into the middle and have a grass buffer on each side between the picnic area and the dumpster area. So just take the middle and flip it to the backside of the grass, to the dumpster side and picnic area in the middle, is what I said.
All right. Okay, anyone in the audience wish to address us?
Hello, my name is Jared Stein. I live at 3400 Crow Lake Drive, Bettendorf, Iowa, 53722. I live to the south and, yes, that's west down, by the pond. So a couple, a couple things I want to note. So first off, that whole property has been raised up, so I don't know what the actual increase in height is of the whole property, but it was leveled out, and they brought in, had to have been 100 loads of dirt, and basically, oh, sure, can you not hear me? Okay. Not a problem, not a problem. So the first thing I was saying was that this, this whole area has been raised up. It used to kind of slope down. It's now much higher up than it was previously, so that's the first thing I just want to point out, that it's now elevated as to what it previously was. My specific concern is, in terms of the two-story building, that's gonna be a very large building now on a raised new surface. I don't know exactly what all went into it, but there, there's no, like, foundation or anything like that. I'd be interested to just make sure that if there's anything that needs to be done because of a two-story as opposed to, you know, a one-story, that that has been considered and discussed. Like I said, I just, I'm not totally sold, obviously, on having a very large two-story building now, kind of 80 feet above us, essentially. That, that's kind of the first thing, and then the rest of them all kind of go to, towards the layout, and I apologize if I have you jump back now, but from my take of it, there's sort of two things that we're missing out on. So this is extremely car-heavy. Where are people going to be walking to get to these businesses? If I want to come from my neighborhood, I'm gonna have to walk, like, all the way out, and then I'm gonna have to, like, run across Frogger Style, the whole parking lot. So that is my concern in terms of if this is intended, which I hope, I suspect it is, intended to be visited by the, the people who live in the community surrounding, this hasn't taken that into account, and I do ask that that be taken back and discussed, because I, I'm not sure I'd feel comfortable sending my son to go to one of those businesses because he's gonna have to traverse quite a few car obstacles to get there. So that's the, the, the big one. The second one, and this is something that, I don't know why it didn't come up before, but there's no dedicated turn lanes into this rainbow or whatever the other, whatever this new road is called. And so in order for people to get into these roads, you're either gonna have to make a right, but in the middle of a lane, or a left, and stop and cross traffic. There's no light or anything like that at either of these intersections, and so I, I don't know what that's going to mean from like a traffic flow perspective, but these are, I'm told, gonna be heavily traffic routes, and we're now gonna be blocking that traffic in order to make people turn in, especially if we're having them drive there and go to these drive-throughs. What is the, the typical number of drive-throughs that are supported in a single location? I haven't really gone around and done the count. I was gonna ask how many drive-throughs, but now I see there's at least three proposed in this one plan, so I do have concerns with the number of drive-throughs. The dumpsters to the south, I don't know where you'd put dumpsters. I would just hope that they're not gonna overflow. I'm hoping that they don't result in trash ending up in the pond, because who's gonna come have to clean that up? It's not gonna be the business owners who are at that location, it's all downstream from them. And then the, the last two things are kind of correlated. Not a huge problem for me, because the angles are great, but the parking spots have the potential, if, if the lights are right, and they have the potential of just shining right into the, the new residential, which is now lower. So I just, I want, I don't know how we typically handle that type of concern in terms of light pollution, but lights, for sure. I haven't heard anything about, like, lighting of the parking lot specifically, but I would be interested, obviously, in making sure that that lighting is not going to be excessive, it's not going to be spotlights. When the ballpark had a temporary lighting setup at one point, it shined right into our house. I just wasn't prepared for it. I want to make sure that if there are lights proposed here, that they're down, that they're dim. I assume they're gonna be on all the time, and I don't see that in this plan. And then kind of similar, the, the noise and the potential for the noise to carry, because this is now above us, and there's absolutely no existing growth there. I just want to be clear, there are no trees, no bushes. They came out, they took out all the trees that did grow over the easement, so folks should be aware that there will be noise complaints coming as a result of the restaurants, even if they try their best, because the noise is gonna carry, it's gonna flow right across into the home. So I don't know if we typically do, like, sound barriers or walls to try to deaden that noise. I know there's some trees. I, I would love to know what the trees are gonna be and make sure that they will eventually block the noise, but I, I'm not sure they're gonna do the job on day one or day 50 even. Happy to talk with anybody afterwards, but thank you so much for your time, and I do appreciate the commission. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address us?
Hi, my name is Steve Giefman. I'm the managing partner for the GRT group that is doing this project. I'm here to, if I can help answer or, or ease anyone, just some of the comments that were made, a little reason why we did some of these things. Specifically, the drive-through, we did want to create, if, if there are three in the end, we wanted to create it so that it didn't impede onto the neighborhoods. That was, that was number one. So each one is separate, so if, if one of the businesses is having an excessive amount of people, it's only there, it only affects them on their site. So that was, that was number one, and we were mindful of that. The other is the dumpster, and I know it was, it was commented as like a picnic area. We're not sure what that area is, but it was, I, I specifically wanted the dumpsters there because I, the, the problem we have, or the good thing we have here, is each side of every building here is a front of. of every building here is a front of the building. You're, you're either fronting Forest Grove, you're fronting Devil's Glen, you're fronting Rainforest, or you're fronting the development. So what we didn't want initially is to put the dumpsters behind the buildings, which would most likely be at the neighborhood. So that was number one. Number two, we had to have another dumpster behind the two-story, so that will be screened. That one won't be. But we're, we're trying to figure out the best way to do the dumpsters. So this was the way that I thought kind of made it easy. It's internal and, you know, we're going to be responsible with all these tenants to make sure it's clean and we've, we do that on other properties that, that we have. So that's kind of the spot where we wanted the dumpsters. I'm not sure if that's where they'll end up, but, but we want to contain it and make it as least intrusive for, for everyone there. The trees, again, will work. I, I don't know the exact species of trees, but we're hoping to, to make it a barrier as best we can for, for the neighbors to the south, the neighbors to the east and whatever happens to the west. I'm trying to see if there were any other questions that I could help answer or ease anyone's thoughts on. I'm sorry? So that's, yeah, thank you. Pedestrian access. So the goal here was to create something different. Now, I was not involved with the original discussions a couple of years ago with what was going here. I know there was a gas station and some of these other things. That is not going here. But we did want to create it as a pedestrian friendly development as best we could. We chose to put the middle sidewalk in that connects Devil's Glen, that connects Rainforest, which then connects to Forest Grove, to kind of connect as best we can. You know, we want everyone to walk here. We'd love it if, if no one drove here, but, but that's kind of the reality of it. So we tried our best. We made the sidewalk through the center as wide as we could to make it work for the development. And then we added the painted, they're either painted or striped, whatever we're going to do to get to each location. You know, we, we can't unfortunately control everyone driving through, but we can, we can give it our best shot. So that was, that was the thought. We did also have a connector on to Forest Grove Road to the north, but the elevation there is we'd need stairs and a railing and it, it became more of a problem. So we figured if we had the connectors from Rainforest, Forest Grove and Devil's Glen inside, we, we were hoping we would accommodate that. In terms of the two-story, I know there was a, a comment on that. The, the back of the building is going to look like the front. We're going to screen as we need to utilities. You know, and again, we're, we're going to go to every standard that, that the city requires. So I think that's all I have. If there are any other questions.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else in the commission have any further comments, questions?
Brent, do you want to address Mr. Stein's concern about traffic overflow and left-right turn, maybe backing out onto Devil's Glen? I, I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Stein, but
Sure.
Address the traffic pattern.
I was trying to find a similar area in town. And the first one that came to mind that's very similar, just with the horseshoe shape, would be Falcon Avenue at 53rd on the south side. So that street is a 31-foot wide street. That's exactly what Rainforest will be. So it's a two-lane street. That supports over eight and a half acres of commercial, six buildings, Quick Star McDonald's, some very, very popular locations, has no problem whatsoever with the two-lane. You do not get into turn lane thresholds. Generally speaking, the, the number that sticks out there is 300 turning movements per hour. So either right or left, you know, and if we're at under 300 total parking spaces with two entrances, 300 turning movements per hour for have to look up the exact number of hours, but it's multiple hours per day. You're not going to hit that threshold. We did establish the, the left turn lane in from Devil's Glen. So as you're heading north into the development and with those offs, even with the, the slightly offset entryways, there's I know Ann had the concern about, you know, whiteys if they, if they do end up coming at that corner, backing all the way up to there. You have very little impedance to get through into these parking lots. That's why you don't have parking directly off those aisles. You've, you've got a continuous aisle. So I, I don't really have any concerns with it. And ultimately, if this became, you know, the single most successful development in the, in Beddorff that we would love and they had issues, there's plenty of right-of-way there if we ever did need to do something. But again, we've got a pretty well-established example of Falcon that, that works really well.
I would imagine having the new intersection out the north also creates a natural gap in traffic. So that might help as well a little bit.
The light at Forest Grove and Devil's Glen?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's what I thought you meant. And that would be the only light, that would be the light closest to this.
That's the closest light, yeah. They need to go south of ways.
About another stoplight or something.
Yeah, there's no, no stoplights.
But it's, it's up and, yeah. The existing one. Thank you.
Using the Falcon Drive area quite a bit, it kind of polices itself to a degree because you can't get out of Quick Star if there's too many cars at one time. Can't get out of the McDonald's parking lot if there's too many. You just have to wait till the light turns and then you can make your way out. Same thing in Davenport Down by the Car Wash, Jimmy John's. You can't get out of that little area of the Starbucks if there's too many cars there. Again, it keeps everything in the development by having the smaller street, but like Rainforest Drive would be.
Yeah. And, and one other thing, I'm glad you said that, Scott. You know, with the new signal at Devil's Glen and Forest Grove, we are also planning a new signal this coming year when the rest of Devil's Glen gets widened at Hopewell and Devil's Glen, which will, for the first time, allow us to actually generate some gapping because we can coordinate those signals. Right now, we've got the stop sign there, which was meant more for traffic calming purposes, quite honestly, and some pedestrian improvements. But putting a signal in there will be able to gap this, specifically this intersection in Crow Lake pretty easily.
Just for the neighbors' concerns, what's the timeline on that, Brent?
That's this year, 2025.
Okay. Any more comments, questions?
My name is Don Lauer, 3647 Lake Bucourt in Beddorff. I live across in Copper Ridge. And we've kind of dealt with the new street layout, which we think has helped. I guess my question is, are they going, when, when will the extension of down Devil's Glen to four lanes, how long is that?
So that'll be this year as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we find now, and I can't imagine when we have people turning left, that traffic has a tendency to move over prior to our entrance and causing some issues with people not knowing, are they turning or are they going straight through to Devil, to Forest Grove?
Okay, the northbound traffic.
But without a, there isn't going to be a turning lane left into this development, is there, you're saying?
Yes, there is. It, it's already there. It's actually built already. It's just you can't use it right now because it's construction access.
Okay.
Yes, there is. When we widened that section in front of you guys, it's five lanes wide.
Okay.
So that's two through lanes and a dual left turn. So a left turn into Copper Ridge and then a left turn into here.
Okay. Because I know that's a lot of our neighbors' concerns is that intersection is going to get busier and we don't want a stoplight there.
Yep. And that was the reason for the, us putting the, the left turn lane in there to try to get traffic off the main line because the, we know that it is. It's an arterial street that's going to continue to take more traffic.
Okay. Well, I think the addition of two lanes further down will avoid the traffic of moving over at the last minute and
Yeah. So that, that taper rule will be in place till the end of this year.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Get ready for construction season. All right. Anyone else? Okay. I think I need a motion.
Can we do these together?
Separate.
Let's separate them.
Okay.
Mr. Commissioner, I would move that we approve case number 25002 per staff recommendation.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, Roy's the second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that we move that we approve case number 25003 as approved by staff.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Okay. Now we're on to zoning ordinance review.
Thank you, Chairman. So yeah, our next items on the agenda are just, it's more of a work session on our zoning ordinance update for 2025. Just announce.
What? Nobody wants to say.
Man, this is the best part.
So, before we tee this up, let's, let's let the room kind of clear out a second here and then, you know, we're kind of at your pleasure tonight, Mr. Chairman. So we were thinking with a relatively light caseload, we might spend a half hour, 45 minutes tonight. Kind of your call. If you want to be the timekeeper, we don't want to keep you here all night. We're trying to eat an elephant a bite at a time and the zoning code is, is a great big elephant that is due to be updated because of our comprehensive plan updates. So got a few chapters. We just want to give you some Cliff Notes on, but we're going to watch for your reactions and let us know how you think this works. And if you want to get through all three chapters or if you want to pause some point in between, let me know and I'm going to close that door.
All right.
Just a hard start, I seven.
Yep, we can, that's
Does that be all right?
Yep.
Yep. Good with that.
Earlier if you like. Talk fast.
And so just as a refresher, we did a little teaser preview back in November. We've been working on the zoning ordinance update with RDG, the same consultant that worked on the comprehensive plan with staff. They have done some, a bunch of work, including reorganizing the chapters, adding some comments and suggestions. So they're, they're completed with that and we were kind of moving to the second draft and that's where we are. On this timeline, we have the project kickoff. We were diagnosing with RDG best practices, doing code audits, et cetera. We are now to that calibration phase. We're beginning to review and gather input from our commission. We'll be doing that with council. We'll be doing, we're setting up some group meetings, stakeholder meetings, developers, the Development Corporation, one-on-one meetings, really the, everything. Trying to get any input. It's a lot of words, a lot of content. So it's kind of harder to get input on. So that's where we are. We passed out, sent an email out. Well, and this is going to be, by the way, this is going to be a very important little reference of, we have our current ordinance, which is chapter, title 11, and the reorganization over to our working draft. So this will be key if you want to really dive in into what we have currently on the books and then where we kind of are proposing to put that. And then
See, we're trying to skinny this thing up a little bit. It's a great big Chicago phone book of a document. I'd like it to be, you know,
A lot of redundancies and multiple, yeah, areas have the same codes three times throughout the code. And then that does, it's hard to administrate that. It's hard to find things. A good example is one chapter we looked at tonight is definitions. We have definitions in like four different chapters right now. We should be able, just like a dictionary, be able to go to the, what, what does the word setback mean? What is a front yard setback? We should be able to look that up. Citizen should be able to look that up, a commissioner, et cetera. But also use types, have that all in one chapter. What is the definition of a drive-through restaurant? What is that? Or is it a regular restaurant? That's kind of the, some of the key things that are all in one chapter. Instead of going through line by line through this whole document, which I think would be not a really good use of our time, Mark, myself and working with our city attorney, Chris Curran, have kind of proposed putting some highlights for each chapter. What we have either, RDG has suggested or what we are thinking, but this does not mean that we, suggestions should be added or these suggestions could be commented on. We want to, we want to hear your feedback. These are just proposals, some of them, but that, all of them actually, because nothing's changed in our ordinance yet. So that's how we've organized each chapter summary. This one has actually two chapters because our first chapter and our 10th chapter are very short. But so we have, we'll, we have those little summaries to go over tonight. And we can kind of, we can just kind of go through them. I can read through them and Mark, anyone, just jump in if you have questions. Why is this? Why do we even have this, et cetera? This is very casual as far as how we are interacting. Yep.
We're starting out with a couple of easy ones. So these aren't going to be that interesting. The title chapter really is just the title chapter. So if you want to pick it apart, we will. And chapter 10 is violations. And that basically says, if you don't follow zoning code, you know, there's a list of things that we can do to you, you know, as a city, which are like civilism.
And if I can jump in too, just real quick. I mean, I, I know that, you know, we, over the last several years have occasionally had substantive issues that I think we wish at times that there was more clarity in the zoning ordinance. And I think a lot of that is what we want to address. And so I have a list that I've had and I think we might all have our lists. These first few chapters are really kind of boilerplate stuff, not really the, the substantive issues. I think when we do get close to having those discussions, be it, you know, parking calculations or the use of floodplain and density calculations or, you know, the C2 is sort of a catch-all, you know, like those sorts of issues, I think that's when, when we will really want to have some major discussion and some policy input. I mean, these chapters, from my perspective, are for the most part just trying to get the ordinance in a more consistent language consistency, definitional consistency. So it's not so much the policy issues that are really addressed in, in these four chapters.
So the Cliff Notes pages that, that we gave you, these little one-page summaries of the chapters, you know, since these are pretty mild chapters to get through, they're, they're kind of small, right? These would be longer. But feel free to kind of look at those. And where we left, like commission input, we kind of left that blank. You can put stuff there. We, sometimes we put some stuff there because we think, hey, they need to really pay attention to this. If there was one or two things we're going to go over tonight that are kind of more substantial, I think definitions is a really good one because zoning really is a list of definitions. You define zones and you define uses and then you see if they match. That's basically what you do every time you have a meeting, right? You look at the defined zoning district and you look at the uses they want to bring there. Are those uses allowed in that district? So that one tonight would be your, your fun one, perhaps. But I would suspect these will kind of get more challenging as we go on.
And so, yeah, the first chapter and the 10th chapter are very boilerplate, as Chris mentioned, but there were some changes made. We had some language that we didn't quite agree with that had been on the books for a while. We added some, RDG suggested adding some language about, you know, what, when does a development actually have to follow the new rules? That was really in the code. So if they submit now, but then the zoning ordinance changes in July, with those transitional provisions are a little more detailed. So some of the, some things like that. Mark added, you know, references some of our, our city resources on the internet, our zoning map, for instance. The current code has a more outdated terminology as far as how the map has changed and edited with, on a paper map at City Hall. So these are some very basic ones. I don't expect questions on this, but happy to hear anything.
I'll just ask, anybody have any questions on the first page, chapters one and
No, not from Roy.
Okay. Moving on.
Thank you.
All right. And I will note, we have 10 chapters of the zoning ordinance as proposed right now. Our new organ, reorganization is 10 chapters and an appendix, one appendix. So it's kind of, it feels good to like get, you know, we just did two chapters. I mean, from a comment perspective. So it'll feel, and we'll just take a bite at a time and we have all, you know, all year to get through this, I guess. But chapter two, so this is the chapter, chapter two, administration procedures. This is really what defines how the, it doesn't establish a zoning commission, but it tells the procedures for how zoning, how applications are the procedures for those applications. How do you proceed with a rezoning, a site plan, a, how do you review them? What criteria do they have to meet? How much those, all the notification requirements, all of that is in this chapter. It also establishes the zoning administrator. It also establishes the zoning administrator, which is the community development director, and then that staff. And so it's really the, the nuts and bolts behind who's in, not, not the enforcement, that was kind of separated, and that's just our penalties really. But how the staffing for the reviews of these applications, and then how they're approved at city council as well. We currently, one, so RDG established a couple of items. We did update our fee schedule. We had permission to update our fee schedule by city council. I don't know when that was, last year sometime, but we haven't done that yet. We need to do that through code. So that was shown in RDG's comments. I mentioned they separated some enforcement administration. They also, we, a very established process that we have is the development review committee. Prior, when we receive an application for any development, we have any internal staff, which is made up of city department heads, city administrator, pretty much city staff, and we review the cases. We then give comments on those cases back to the developer, and there's a process on how they respond to those comments. And this is a very typical process in city development across the country through different planning departments. That wasn't really cited, so we've encode very well, so that's been improved upon. One proposal, we've heard some feedback from staff, from commissioners, from, would be to kind of separate, separate some of the cases that come before the planning zoning commission. Sometimes we get cases that are very minor, that add to the agenda. And then we get lists, we get twelve items on agenda, and some of them are minor site plans that, well, they're minor site plans, that speaks for itself. So we're proposing maybe having a avenue that doesn't require a planning and zoning approval and city council approval, which adds time, adds more cases to the plate of both council and planning zoning commission. If they meet a certain criteria, that, we still want transparency, so we're proposing that development review committee be that transparency and have like a record of why this is, what the comments are, on why it's approved, why it's not approved, et cetera.
Like a consent agenda, like cities do sometimes.
Well, we talked about that, so I think we're at, we're at number five, if you're keeping score.
Yeah, number five, yes.
So number five, so trying to, trying to pull out minor site plans from not having to come before this body. We, we as staff think that's a good play? We think you would agree with this, because there's sometimes things that show up here that, you know, right now, the, the rule says that a ten percent change, I don't even know what a ten percent, how, how you quantify that, requires, more than ten percent requires a site plan modification to an existing site plan. But then for a new site plan, something that's maybe really minor, kind of just a boilerplate thing, still comes to this body and then still comes to council. We believe as staff, and we think we're insisting it from this room, that there's some stuff you just don't need to see at a site plan level. I'm not sure how council feels yet. We're going to work with them. So we're looking to try and develop some language in our code that picks up these smaller developments, you know, they certainly need plats and the rezonings, all that stuff still comes to you. But when the, when the actual site itself is really a given, there isn't much to do, much to contemplate. We would still have a review, it would be at a staff level, and we would have a record of that review, which we could report out to you. We could say, hey, you know, these are the ones we did at the end of the year or something. So there'd be a public record, but it wouldn't be at this commission and that planning and zoning. So I think number five is probably the one, if you want one to sink or die tonight, that's one that we'd like your reaction on, and if we're reading the room wrong and you think you want to see them all, we need to know that.
I move to approve.
I would, I would agree with that. But I, go ahead, Roy.
No, I just, one typo I picked up in number five, the first line, it says, excuse me, at the end, development review, it's missing the word committee in there, so you want to just add that in. But a couple of things. One, with the commission, if the commission were not reviewing it, would it still go to the city council with the recommendation from staff or city council, or if I pass that whole process?
So the language isn't written yet, but I'm not envisioning it goes to council either.
So right now, our, how our, our code reads, any development in the city requires council or commission review and council approval, approval, except for single-family dwellings and two-family dwellings. And those developments less than, it's, it's a ten percent. The ten percent's a little vague. Is it adding ten percent? New developments, no matter what, but ten percent, is it a change of use? Is that ten percent? Is it a change in intensity? Is it only more intensity or less intensity? So that's a little vague, but that's how it reads. Anything other than single family. So when we get a permit, we approve a subdivision, this count, this commission, final plat, subdivision gets built, they sell a lot, we get a permit for a single-family home. This commission's not reviewing the single-family home. The place on the lot, does it meet the setbacks? That goes through our permitting process. A planner reviews it, but this doesn't go through that. If we were to get a subdivision of commercial lots, though, all of new, the subdivision was a great example, that would, all those, each lot or as a collective would go through review. And we're, that's, I think, a major site plan, but it, or if this, one of these buildings comes through and adds a ten-by-fifteen addition that meets the setbacks, that there's all, you know, there's got to be a threshold. Would we have it a two-month review process through our commission and council? That's kind of the question we're asking. Many cities, if you look at some of the other cities, who have, some cities have very few, a little site plan review at their council level. I, we're not really suggesting that. We're not trying to go that far. So a lot of cities have a hybrid, like a site, a minor site plan, major site plan review process. I think, Lynn, I think we had one at Scott County, I believe we had a minor site plan and major, had different requirements for the submittals. And this would not change rezonings, would not change ordinance amendments, would not change, right now, we still have to do the final plat, that's a whole nother title that someday maybe we'll get to, but this is just site plans, yeah.
That was the building owner and adding just a small addition to my building that met code, that met the setback, everything, requirements were met. So aside from it making a smoother meeting process, but it would speed it up for that homeowner.
It's also a developer friendly, yeah.
So it would save time and money on their perspective too, right? It's, it's not just about what comes before us, but rather keeping things moving.
I think it would be considered a pro-development policy.
Can we use tonight as an example? What if they took two of those buildings, didn't change the size, just flopped them from where they're at?
Yeah, we could, we'd have to meet, we definitely need to make some language, some thresholds, some metrics, which we don't have yet, but that might be something like.
Because we, we've approved the whole development, which is all kept within this nice little area. But I don't see why, if they were to even just take one of the buildings and turn it ninety degrees, why do, why does that need to come back? As long as it still meets all of the setback requirements, all of the, all of the other criteria.
Even if we, I think you're bringing up a good point. Even if we didn't want to have less, we didn't think there was a desire to have these minor site plans not have to come to this body, we still need better language right now than ten percent change. Because I don't know how I would quantify a ten percent change, you know, is it the sign, is that one percent? And then, you know, each parking spot's another percent? I don't know how to quantify that. So I think there's some language that could be improved there. And then also another improvement would be identifying some of these that, that probably don't need to come here. We can think of cases we've had in our industrial parks where literally is a, a strip of, of, you know, worker condos or storage condos, neck, you know, acre lot next to existing facility that's just like it. What's to review? You know, we're, but we're bringing that to you, and it's the same thing that's right next to it. But by code, I think we have to bring it to you right now.
Well, you make a good point, especially in a case like this where their tenant, expected tenant list could change. Where.
Yeah, it's very hard for a developer to.
It's hard for, you know, and now we've stopped everything because of our process. It takes all these steps. When we've already approved it, it met code, it met everything, and all we're doing is shifting.
And we're only talking the site plan here, all the other stuff.
Agreed.
Yeah, so we can, and we can review past cases through our, you know, annual reports and kind of see what, maybe it's only, hopefully it's a larger percentage, but maybe it's only a very small percentage of the cases. But I have a feeling we'll see a, a good number, and it lets the commission and council concentrate on the true larger developments and not get, I mean, we've had, we've had meetings where we'd be almost distracted. Or worn out by the time we get to the bottom of the agenda, because it's, it's, hasn't happened in a while, but.
Well, it's unfair to the audience.
It's unfair to the applicant and the audience.
Everybody involved in the affairs that are getting paid to be in the audience.
So I think we, we agree that come up with some.
Yeah, okay, so we'll, we'll do, we'll kind of dig into that then with.
Yeah, I, I like the concept of it too. I'm in favor of it. One note I wrote when I was reviewing this was, I underlined minor site plans and said, how do we define minor? So whatever you guys can get to an acceptable, you know, definition of something that we're.
Yep, we can go.
We're defining it, because everybody's going to want to be, oh, I'm minor, so I don't need to go through the whole process, as long as you've got your work.
And I think having all those cases still go to our development review committee, I think, and they'll be always adding that discretionary, maybe they meet the metrics of the minor, but their intent really is, you know, cumulative or subsequent development, and they can elevate it up to full review. I think that's always, and we have that throughout our code for.
We can all, we can always kick it up if we're uncomfortable.
Yeah, what if they come in with ten small additions?
Kick it back down.
Yeah.
We could kick it up for further scrutiny.
Yeah, Taylor, one thing.
Yep.
Specifically, I think final plats could be a huge one. I was looking back at the annual report. I mean, we had twenty-one final plats last year, and I bet half of those were.
I agree with you, Brett.
Five lots or.
I agree with you, Brett, but we, that isn't our subdivision title. So we'll probably be doing that maybe next year, but we'll, we'll focus on the zoning title first. Yeah, our final plats, when we get, we only have the power right now to not go to council for splits. That's pretty much it, yeah. Plats are surveys.
Would there be some value of putting a time limitation if it'd been approved?
On site plans?
Yeah.
So that was.
Number nine.
Oh, are we?
We have that, that was discussed, I think Chris brought this up. So currently, our code has a time set for variances, variance in special use permits and exceptions, if you don't start the process of using that approval. So say you get a special use permit for a something, and you have a blank field, and you just don't build it for three years. I think it's a two-year time limit. You'd have to go back and kind of, because the environment's changed. We don't have that for a site plan right now. I think might be beneficial to look at adopting similar language or using the same time limit, since we already have it kind of built into code. If you don't start the, the site plan for two years, we need to reevaluate what the conditions are at the site, and that's really what site plan process is.
The other thing with that is, is if we do have an approved site plan that says it's ten, fifteen years old, and Mark and Taylor aren't here anymore, and then it comes back to life, and you've got no historical knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, this example, this isn't the best example, but tonight's example, if for some reason they didn't want to make some minor change to this major thing that we just approved, but it's five years from now, or ten years.
Yeah.
Without that being fresh, you really do probably need to start.
And I think the protection from, the thought might have been before is, even there's no time limit, that since every site plan has to come for approval, and that ten percent change, that if it lasts that long, that it's almost impossible to create that same site plan. But we have had that happen. We've had a site plan that was approved years ago, and they somehow produced, they produced, produced what was approved, basically. I think it was a car wash, too.
Yeah, well, I also remember at TBK, we found the camper RV.
That was a zoning, yeah.
That was approved.
The PUD for the camper, yeah.
Little bit different, but yeah.
But the, so I think this will be, this will be in the benefit of the public, and it'll help, we review things that are currently, what we know of, we don't know what's, everything that's happening in two years or three years. So that's my, that's what we're kind of proposing.
I'm going to bring you back.
Go.
All right, number six, board of adjustments, not for us. Number seven, and by the way, we already did number nine. Number seven, I do have a comment on that one.
Yes.
That's on public hearings.
Yeah.
I like the idea, except for, the problem with that is if we don't have the vote at the same time we hold the public, the public hearing. I've sent, I feel that maybe we're going to have some residents out there that think we pulled one over on them or are not transparent. I think to separate the public vote from the public hearing, or our vote from the public hearing, I just think there could be a problem.
The appearance is.
The appearance of a problem, not an actual problem, an appearance of a problem.
That doesn't sell well. I would suggest, though, I mean, I'm, I'm with you, I just, I know the intent here is to keep these from turning into six-hour meetings. So, you know, there are other communities, and I think we've all experienced it, where you have to sign up ahead of time to speak.
Yep.
You have a two-minute limit or a three-minute limit at the podium.
And we've been very generous on that. We've been very generous.
Strongly encourage you to not repeat what your neighbor just said. And I'll use Bloomington as an example, Bloomington Normal. They've got a pretty defined process for public hearings. And if you haven't signed up ahead of time, there's still, if, if time were to allow, but there's a certain amount of time for a public hearing, and it's all published ahead of time, so. It would potentially limit the five-hour meeting, which is unfair to everybody in this room.
So I wonder if that's more of a commission procedure as opposed to a administrative chapter edit. I know, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we all, we know that just even locally, not here in Bettendorf, but just locally, there's been a lot of discussion about civility at public hearings. And I think for the most part, you know, we have had a few that we can all remember that have been difficult. But I think for the most part, we're, we're pretty lucky where we are, and I think our, the discussion is good, and I think it's like a real balance of, you know, not wanting to appear to be too bureaucratic or just checking the, you know, you want to hear everybody out. But you also don't want it to be, you know, making direct statements to a staff member, perhaps, that is, you know, calling, you know, it's, the questions need to be directed to the commission. All of those are sort of procedural, sort of rules of the commission that I think we could work through, and we did when we had a really contentious meeting, we, or were anticipating it, we put out some rules. Mark, I think that was a year or two ago, where we had like a written statement of decorum that we can maybe more regularly use.
Would that, would that go in the code, though?
No, it would not go in the code, to your point, it would not go in the code. This would be just really a tool, as, as Mark and Taylor told me, like there were, I think Davenport, just routinely, or maybe just, they do, they never have a vote.
I think they do by practice, yeah.
They, they don't, typically the vote and the public hearing are separated.
But they also meet more regularly, so that's kind of why they, they meet twice a month, so they schedule the public, and I do see both sides of it.
I certainly understand.
You want people to feel heard, certainly. That's the right, the, I will say that, in the time that I've been on the commission, the contentious meetings we've had is when things are getting, dragging on, because we're getting tired, we're getting frustrated. They're saying the same things, they somehow believe that they can say it in a different way to sway our vote or change an opinion. And so then, you know, of course, it doesn't always end very well. We're lucky, like you said, we don't have a lot of contentious things, but I think, again, without some enforcement method, how do you do that? Because I think that kind of saying it upfront, expectations, requirements, if you're going to speak, that this has to happen, I think that's, you control the temperature in the room.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think there's two issues on the table. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I think there's two issues on the table. One is kind of commission procedures, and I think we as staff are happy to help work on that, and, and we want quick meetings, but we also want to hear our citizens. I'm a big believer that citizens should have the right to petition their government and tell them they don't like what the government's doing. I really err on that side personally. The other thing is, do we want to put in code the ability, not that we always do it, but the ability to hold the public hearing separate from the vote?
Well, and I guess, I think, Mark, I don't, I guess, I think this public hearing issue maybe is somewhat on, I don't want to say I'm, I'm to blame for this, but we did have a rezoning where we sort of required an official public hearing, because that's what our, that's what our ordinance requires for rezonings. And so we started, we changed our procedure, but our code says what it says. In further review of Iowa code, you know, there was, and I think I mentioned this to Roy, that maybe we don't need to do these public hearings for rezonings. Because, I don't want to get in the weeds here, but the Iowa code says city council has to have a public hearing before a rezoning takes place. However, there's a separate section of Iowa chapter four fourteen in defining the powers of the zoning commission that does reference public hearings. And so I think to not have a potential technicality get in the way, which is what we were trying to avoid on this. on this previous matter. Um, I still think having a public hearing for rezonings should take place at, at, at this level for, with, for the commission. I think the issue of whether there's a separation between this public hearing and the vote on that matter, really, you know, today you always have the ability to vote to postpone that, that matter. So you could just do that. I think it would be, and to your point about communication or expectation of the citizen that's here, you know, do they, do they expect to vote this night? I mean, certainly the agenda, if there's no action item, um, for, associated with that public hearing, they would be on notice that there, that there would not be a vote expected. If you wanted to go that route and you, you could even do that in setting the agenda now, you wouldn't have to have an, an action item for that public hearing. You also, as I said, always have the ability to make a motion to postpone action on that item.
But close to the public hearing.
And, and close, and close, or sometimes we leave it open because we have to leave it open in order to, um, to allow, uh, ti, you know, for there to be change. So we sometimes leave it open, um, at council, that is. Um, anyway, it gets a little complicated and, and kind of in the weeds. But I think for the most part, when we're going through this new zoning ordinance, my recommendation is to leave the public hearing process for rezonings at P and Z. So.
Here's the thing, if we get, uh, the resolution and basically when you're gonna commit, I mean, commence the voting, the voting is a very small part of this in terms of time. The big part is that public hearing.
Correct.
Do you wanna invite these people back for another potential, or they're gonna show up maybe in the same number and they're gonna come back? Do you wanna sew it up at one time, get it all done, taken care of, or do you want them to come back? Have another opportunity. They think they're gonna, to speak to this and they may not have the opportunity. I mean, if you can commence it, the short part of it is the voting part. The longer part, like Mark's talking about is let's look at the behavior of corralling this a little bit more and condensing it so that the speaking time might be less. The voting part is actually the lesser part of this whole thing. So if you do it all at one step, it can marshal on to the next level, which is city council.
So you've kind of put me in this seat, so I'm gonna speak my mind right now, so we can move on. What I would like to see is someone come up with a procedure for us to use, whether it's a public hearing or not a public hearing, for when we look out here and every chair is full. A way that we can limit the folks that night to speaking a certain amount of time. And if we feel as aboard that they're not getting enough time, then we can move it on to the next month or a special meeting.
Yeah.
But just a way that we can, uh, keep that group out there from repeating the same thing over and over again. Each person for ten minutes at a time. And before you know it, we're three hours later.
Oh, yeah.
I can, I can ask you a quick question. If you're, if Chris, I guess, by the way, the rip the band-aid off quick, cause it hurts less, Greg. I'm with you on that. And let's get it done. But is there any mechanism that would allow? The, and I like the idea of having the public meeting and the vote same night, again, from a transparency and people being able to attend that sort of thing, how, just the appearance. But is there any mechanism that would? A certain number of protests, a certain number of community and, and, you know, emails or whatever that would trigger, okay, this public hearing is gonna be, be on a Tuesday versus the Wednesday of planning and zoning.
I think it's a little complex, cause what do you qualify? We get a lot of phone calls. Is that a protest? Is that an inquiry? Like, I got a piece of mail. What is this? Oh, I'm, I'm cool. Bye.
Okay, this, we know this is contentious based on this, we need to do it and we publish it. It's to me less like, if I'm in the audience, I've got, you know, a shell game then, oh, you're not voting tonight?
I think Mark does a good job of trying to predict that, but.
Yeah. And we've had one or two of these. We're having one or two of these a year.
Yeah.
But it would be nice when we, when we do have them, if we have a procedural mechanism in place that can keep it moving.
Okay.
I made a note to work on commission procedures. We can do that in concert with the zoning updates.
That before we actually get done.
We'll work on that.
All right. Let's move to chapter three. We're trying to keep on, we have a timeline now.
Well, this is the fun one.
So, um, this was form, like, as I mentioned before, this was definitions and use types were, use types had its own chapter, but definitions were spread out all over the place. Um, so RDG, um, had consolidated these, uh, definitions, which are, as mentioned, like a setback, uh, front, the front yard setback, et cetera. And then also the use types which define, um, it's land use, it's a classification system. Um, these are important because when we get to our zoning districts, we just, we clump these use types in those different districts, permitted, special use, not permitted, et cetera. We did give you, uh, kind of a list of some new use types. That's really what we're gonna talk about. Everything in red is new and, uh, or there's, uh, at least it put this together. Uh, so there is some, a, a lot of amendments done. So this might, might be one to come, take home and look over every once in a while, cause I think we'll think of new novel uses or this, really this list has not been updated a lot over the years. Um, and we sometimes get stuck on proposed uses. And then ultimately really the zoning administrator, Mark, has to write a determination letter of, I think this use is this. And we have a few determination letters in the file. So this also was updated for state code. Uh, so the state, um, chapter four fourteen, it, uh, provides definitions for various uses and they're always adding more. Uh, so we have, you know, home-based or no impact businesses. Uh, we have something with fireworks sales. So there's a, we have to make that consistent throughout our, uh, use types.
The biggest one for staff that I recall on this one, and Greg, you guys all probably maybe have your own, but it was, um, brew pubs. We didn't, we didn't have brew pubs as a use type. We had breweries and we had bars and pubs. Uh, but we didn't have the combined use type. And then they started showing up here in the last four, five years and we were struggling to, to fit them in the codes. We had to do all these, you know, zoning determinations, which are maybe not the best. So to have it in code, you know, that's, that's a real easy example of what we're talking about here.
Look at the Bethlex. We've never had that before.
We had a driving range in the, in our code, but not a driving range with, uh, arcades and.
Iron TV, three levels of open door, doorways.
And this translates throughout the code. So when you get that use type, then we go to our parking, off-street parking. And that pa, parking is defined by the use types and the, goes on and on and on. So, um, that's, this is a big, uh, process that we didn't try to improve or a big improvement.
Question, where does a brew pub that has a food truck in its parking lot every night fall into place?
Yeah. I mean, and that's, yeah.
Um, and that's actually, I, I don't know if we added this to.
I think we had some.
I think we had. So these are, um, we have two types of u, um, categories of uses, actually, oh, three actually. We have a principal use. So, um, in a single family residential, uh, lot, you have your principal use is your house. Your accessory use would be your detached garage, you're storing things in that. Now you can't have your principal use be your detached garage and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So we also have a temporary use, which we don't use very often, but I guess they would be.
Construction batch plant was one that comes to mind.
Oh, could, yep, some batch plants. Um, so those are, these were RDG made, uh, definitions for all these temporary uses. We had them in code spread out, um, accessory uses, we had them, they weren't even in like a definition format. They're more list, in a list format. So those are all in one space, uh, and we can share those. I don't think the accessory uses made it. And then you, then you can go into the code and that can go back to this one chapter and read those. So accessory uses, uh, patio, um, would be an accessory use to a, a bar, for instance.
I think the big one is, you know, what's probably in all of our minds is accessory dwelling unit. You know, how do we define that and where's that gonna fit?
And we, we got a partial definition in the code.
We do, and that's a good point, Greg. Like.
Elaborate more though.
This will be food for thought for later, maybe teed up, not for tonight's discussion, but as it comes down the road, uh, we have a definition right now of accessory dwelling unit in our, in our current code that is pretty much not an accessory dwelling unit because it's a unit within a home. So if you wanna outfit your basement to have a small little living area in it, you can do that. That, that's not accessory, that's primary.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's what we're calling accessory dwelling units. We, we would contend that we need an appropriate definition of accessory dwelling unit and then need to appropriately zone them. Um, and.
There's different types, uh.
There's probably gonna be a lot of thought, different thoughts on that.
Yep.
But they are, I, that you are including a, that we are agreeing to open the door. Would that be something that we approve?
Yeah. So, you know, tonight's all about input. Of course, nothing's approved tonight, uh, but I think the conversation on accessory dwelling units, I wasn't really prepared to have it tonight, but that's, we need to define them as, as what they really are. Because first of all, we don't have an appropriate definition. And if we zone them, you know, very restrictively or very wide open, you know, that, that's a discussion for where they go, uh, in zoning districts. Right now I think they're only in R one and.
R three through R five.
Yeah, only R three through R five, but they're actually within the primary use. They're not actually accessory uses.
Yeah.
So in that example of someone that came to you right now and wanted to do a tiny home in their backyard and, or an Airbnb, you would, would just turn it down.
They'd probably turn it down, yeah.
Cause we don't have the language.
But, but if you have a large lot and you wanna have a pool house.
That has a kitchen, a bathroom and.
So then that's not allowed, that, you know, it's not just living in it.
We really direct them to kind of do a, what you would qualify as a shop. Uh, it has a bathroom, has a sink, has, has everything but what actually defines a dwelling unit, which you need the cooking, uh, all those categories. So.
Even if we highly restrict accessory dwelling units within our code, we still need to define what they are correctly.
Yeah, that's, that's.
We still need to write definition.
In a gray area.
Yeah. And then how, how far you wanna open that door?
Um, I think some of the other definitions I wanna highlight were, we had some very, um, and these things I think we need to improve on still. Um, how we define basically gas stations, um, and some of those, uh, what, uh, the thresholds basically, we, I think we had before, we had eight vehicles, was it Mark? Um, that's part, part of it's the definition, but part, and also part of it's what zoning districts they're allowed in. But I think, uh.
The definitions for gas stations in our existing code are troublesome because they're commingled with convenience food sales. So it's defined as convenience food sales with gas or convenience food sales without gas. And then the next place you come across them is at truck stops and travel centers.
Yep.
That's a really old way to do that. Um, you know, there's gas stations that, all gas stations have convenience food now, it seems. I don't know.
Well, we have gas stations like Costco and Sam's Club that have no convenience at all. And probably gonna have more and more of that type of product, uh, or that setup. So.
So we, we, we tried to disentangle those definitions, define gas stations, define standalone gas. Again, just cause we have the definition, doesn't mean we allow it everywhere willy-nilly, but we need the appropriate definitions to, to control it or allow it going forward, if that makes sense.
So I think this list is, this is some of the list and we're gonna, as we go through months and months, we're gonna be coming back to this and say, I think we're missing this. Or this is within the definition, this, that threshold needs to change. Um, so that's what we hope to get back. I think you're not gonna have the ideas right away. When we start looking at the different zones and like, look at past developments, I think those, these will come out, uh, jump out at you and like, we need to define that differently or create a whole new definition, um, to separate. So it's a little bit of the zoning districts and the use definitions, as Mark mentioned earlier.
I had, uh, I had a lot of, I'll call it red ink on these definitions. Um, there's a lot of things in there that are somewhat ambiguous, or I question how would you, from a practical standpoint, monitor or manage like six, and one way it says fifteen thousand barrels, then it's, it's twelve thousand gallons and twenty-five thousand gallons. Who's measuring gallons and barrels on these things, you know? Um, there's a lot of definitional things. I won't drop the, the group, you know, for tonight, but I can go over you guys definitely. But, you know, self-storage outdoors, self-storage enclosed, they're almost identical wording, you know? So there's a lot of those that I think are, still need a lot of work just from looking at it. Cause like, as I read it, I was like, oh man, I'm, I'm not sure I could, could explain this to somebody or how's it different? Like I said, outdoor versus enclosed. So I can go through that with you guys separately, but I had quite a few marks on the definitions myself.
That's, that's the input we need. And that's, that's when you see us struggling through a staff report on some use that's come before you, because the definition is so hard for us to define or get our arms around. So, yeah, absolutely. We wanna build up ministries, these definitions, and if they're not clear, we need to, to tighten them up.
So, yeah, we're at the end of our, uh, time period here, but I just wanna reemphasize, uh, is, this is the open input. This is not, we're not taking action on these. This is kind of a, we're gonna go to chapter by chapter, but if you think of things as you go through, day to day, please get, get ahold of us or let us know what your think, your thoughts are. Uh, as new developments come before the commission, you might have some fresh ideas too. So, um, we thank you for your time.
Thanks for having me do it.
All right. Any commission updates?
No, this is it, guys.
All right.
We're gonna work this in as, as a kind of catch as catch can, if you will. So we have light agendas. We're gonna try and have a half hour deep dive on this. Busy nights, we probably will skip it, if that's okay.
All right. With that, meeting's adjourned.